Yeah, now it's not.
Did Marissa mention anything to the students?
I, I left, I went in here and just thought.
So you can put it.
Yeah, I said. I did.
You see, it told me what it was. It should be able to use that remote. Move the camera itself.
I don't know why it does.
Let her just get it as good as we can get it and go on. Okay, we'll open the business session of the elementary school board. Our first content item tonight is student on staff recognition.
Just a quick note, girls' basketball season actually concluded last night. I had, the girls' basketball ended their season with seven wins, 11, well, 12 losses with last night. Nineteen games played this year. And the boys' team has a couple of games to go yet in the regular season and begins the playoffs on Tuesday. So that's it for student recognition at the moment.
The president's report today. Four of our five members are attendants. John is unable to be here tonight. The next board meeting will be the 10th of March, correct? Are we going to be back to the elementary school lineup?
Uh, we're hoping to be.
Okay, very good. Administrative reports. Report on ESSER, elementary and secondary school emergency relief, Sir Ben and Cora.
Uh, my report this evening, it's gonna be brief, but it's gonna focus on what is known by a lot of people as the CARES Act funding, but otherwise in the school world is ESSER, or the elementary and secondary school emergency relief. In the late spring, early summer, the district received a grant allocation from the federal ESSER program of $63,595. And we've utilized every red cent of that program at this point on things such as our HVAC system upgrade to improve air quality in the building, personal protective equipment and supplies, technology equipment related to trying to do online and virtual instruction, other medical and cleaning supplies. So that money, you know, the big ticket item in that group and that $63,000 was the HVAC upgrades that we did. ESSER 2 was the second relief COVID package that was passed this past December. The second round, at the moment, we are believing we're gonna receive about $250,000. The state legislature, the state legislature's joint finance committee has to sign off on that plan. The amount that we are allocated though is one of the unnegotiable amounts in that plan, meaning it was determined by the federal formulas that are used for our title. There are some other monies, a part of that plan, that are discretionary to a certain degree. And so the DPI and the joint finance committee of the legislature have to come to some level of understanding as to what that looks like. But really, our allocation is, it's pretty much gonna be about $250,000. In the second round of funding, we're looking to continue to offset technology costs. And we've purchased a lot of Chromebooks, a lot of other technology pieces, and done some things for our networking to allow for us to do virtual and do some online things that we hadn't planned on doing. I mean, we've, at this point, we've put a Chromebook or made available a Chromebook for every student grade two through 12. And prior to this year, we were nine through 12. So that's quite an expense, extra nursing costs. Our nursing costs have gone up, so we can funnel some of those costs over into the ESSER 2 program along with our extra maintenance physician that we had brought out. That can be part of the ESSER 2, additional personal protective equipment, cleaning items. It is quite a long list, including some of the plumbing upgrades we did to go hands-free or touchless on a lot of our plumbing. Those things can be added in there. At the end of the day, we would like to carry forward somewhere to the tune of $80,000 to $100,000 as we finish out this year's budget into next year out of that ESSER 2 funding to look at things like if we need to address any remedial items or intervention items. And again, if there's any other outstanding costs that we think we're going to incur for, you know, if we're still needing personal protective equipment or other cleaning supplies and some load items. You know, really, probably the biggest fear I have and what's happened in terms of the educational side of things is the students who have been for 11 months in the virtual world, or maybe not quite 11 in terms of true school months, but they've spent most of this school year and the end of last school year in a virtual system, whether they're our own students or even more so, transfer students in. If we get students who transfer into our district next fall, there's a distinct possibility we get students who haven't been in a classroom in over a year. And so that worries me. And so I think it's, would be wise to carry some of that forward to potentially address some of those problems. We have the ability to carry forward ESSER 2 funding for up to two years. So then there is a distinct possibility that there will be a third round of this emergency relief funding for schools. And we don't know those dollar amounts yet. It is, from the looks of what I've seen so far and heard from some of the different legislative connections that we have, it's likely to be a significant amount, again. You know, $250,000 is not a drop in the bucket for us on this. But I will tell you, in terms of our, trying to address COVID in a whole bunch of different ways across the spectrum, it certainly has been an expensive proposition. Money that I think people thought was saved in the spring, in the fall, was not saved any longer. You know, there's certainly some things we probably have budgeted for this year to keep some semblance of our traditional budget moving forward that will have some savings on, but there are certainly other areas where we have, you know, just the simple fact of trying to bring technology up, it's been a major expense. So that's my report on the ESSER funds and where we are at at the moment with it.
Thank you. Any questions for Sir Ben and Cora? All right, moving on to the life tools group. Report to principal person.
This is a, life tools is a social emotional group that has just recently been started at our elementary school. It was a grant that Mrs. Luzetza, our guidance counselor, applied for and received. It's a newer group that was developed by a psychologist at Marshfield Clinic. It's an after-school program for youth and it's just kind of a stepping stone, a liberate between school and parents and the community, just to talk about healthy preventative care and healthy development socially and emotionally. Marshfield Clinic is funding the program. And it is two eight-week sessions. The first one is for girls and the second one is for boys. It's for kiddos that are kind of what we call our tier one and tier two students only. This is not for kids that have the social emotional issues. It is not group therapy. They do not ask kids personal questions about their lives or their homeland or family. They don't evaluate your diagnosis. It's more of a tool where they learn practical skills for their day-to-day lives. They talk about, they eat 60-minute sessions after school. They talk about self-awareness, like knowing their strengths and limitations, confidence, optimism, growth mindset, self-management, managing stress, controlling impulses, achieving goals, relationship skills, communicating, listening, cooperating, negotiating conflict, offering help. So the whole idea is to have, help kids be more successful at home and at school and the community. So we are on week three and Mrs. Luzetza and Ms. Sorbo, who is helping her, and they're doing it one day after school. And so far, the kids have loved it and have had a really good time. I started out with the girls and then they'll move to the boys. So there was, there was a very, very good turnout and participation so far, so.
And maybe it's probably the students.
Good question. Right now, I don't, I don't know. This is probably, um, most of our, I think we did third, second, third graders, I think we're doing right now, third and fourth graders. Good question. I should have asked how many were there last time. There was a good group of maybe 15, probably, 15 or 20 that I saw. I was picking in on them. So yeah, it was a good group. I can find out how many girls ended up.
Do the kids attend with their parents?
Uh, no, the parents get a sheet of what happened that day in the syllabus and they signed it and the parents pick them up after. They, of course, have snacks all over there and all that stuff. And then the parents get some things that they can take home to practice at home.
Like a great program.
It does. Any questions for this president? Next on the agenda, a report on CTE month from Principal Shuler.
Well, you know, here on the radio, there's puppy day or chocolate day. Well, Kyle told me that it's CTE month, so I had to do some research. Here at school, it's for career technical education and it's for the month of February to explore their achievements and accomplishments to celebrate. We here at work also have to celebrate a grant that Mr. Spencer wrote for $2,500 that came to us from Midstate. So we have two reasons to celebrate. We have three teachers in our CTE area that have been going strong in our strength building building every, every year or every semester, I should say. And again, that's Steve Burnell in tech ed, Gary Spencer in business ed, and Marissa Vishy at family consumer services. And she is going to share a couple of things that are going on right now in those areas.
Uh, CTE at John Edwards is thriving. We have a wide selection of classes in multiple career pathways, top tier business, technology education, and family consumer science departments. We offer classes where students are getting lifelong learning and career applicable skills. Some of our classes offer dual credit through Mid State Technical College, allowing our students to earn credits both here at school and at Mid State. I'm currently teaching one class called nutrition for health and living. And we'll be adding a second dual credit class, mental health and stress management, next year. Students who take both of these will leave here with six credits in Mid State's health and wellness associate degree program. Not only will the credits be earned at Mid State, but there are many four-year universities who accept these credits, including UWSP, as part of their health and wellness undergraduate bachelor's degree. The best part is whether they choose to use the credits from away, over 20 years from now. There will be there at Mid State waiting for them, help give them head start in other programs. They can also use them outside of those health and wellness areas for like elective credits and know a lot of different programs. So even if they're not choosing that as their career pathway, it still gives them that extra add bonus going into school. Steve Burnell wanted me to share that currently our tech ed department offers high school students 15 classes to choose from in six different career areas. This allows students to find direction in a potential career that will be highly rewarding to them in the future. He further shared that the Department of Labor's statistics say there have been 705,000 new apprenticeships nationwide since 2017 and hundreds of thousands of job openings in CTE related fields. Our students here at John Edwards are further helped in CTE with participation in FBLA and Skills USA. Both of these organizations have high participation among our JHHS students. Students are learning leadership skills and being able to network with other students as well as community and business partners. Students also have the opportunity to do work-study and apprenticeships through our CTE programs. And these cooperative efforts with local businesses and industry strength and our relationships with the community enable our students to fully experience the world of work and learn through experience with their own trajectory. CTE plays an extremely important part in preparing our students for life after high school by giving them valuable skills and giving them that leg up in the world of work as well as a higher education. So I hope that you will take a moment and reflect on the exciting and important things happening in our CTE. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Principal Shuler or Mr.?
Sounds like lots of opportunities here.
Would you hazard a guess at to what percentage of the John Edwards student body takes a class in one of those three areas at some point during their school career? Is it virtually everyone?
I would say virtually everyone, yes.
That's awesome. That's fantastic. That's great. Thank you very much. Questions, comments from people named in attendance tonight? Anybody wish to address the board on any issue? Now, Gary, can you, we will move on to the consent agenda. Consider approval of the minutes of the past meeting, January 13th.
Motion.
Second.
Motion on second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda, financial reports, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Do we have ifs, Jason?
I guess it did, we were. Jenny Oliver brought another bag of hand-in-hacks over to the elementary school, yes. And Karen, I think would like to just send and extend a thank you to the Boys and Girls Club for a hand drive that they did to donate to our backpack program at the holidays. Do you think they had a better?
Yeah, they just, they had just wanted to do something at the Boys and Girls Club back to school. So the unit director started a hand drive and they leave a backpack program on our weekend to send home the kids on the weekend. So they decided that they were just going to do it and bring it back to our school. So I thought that was very nice of our Boys and Girls Club local unit to support, to support our elementary.
Do you know how many students get backpacks?
We have about four families right now. And, you know, we'll look to expand it as we have the funds. And, you know, we're looking right now as to, we have some ideas as to how we're gonna keep that funding going as well as keep that moving through the, into the future. It started really great and we're gonna kind of, we've got some ideas. We've had some great donations too. Some oceans brighten, they can earmark juice to give to certain places. And we've had a lot of people that work for them earmarked it to go to us, so that's helped us. There's, there's lots of places where we've been getting things, so it's been, it's been amazing.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you very much. There is no unfinished business, so moving on to new items. Consider approval of amendment to the 21, 22 question.
Motion for the financial reports.
I'm sorry. Motion for the financial reports.
Second.
Motion for second on the consent agenda financials. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion varies. All right, now we move to new business. Consider approval of amendment to the 21, 22 question description book.
I will turn that, let him over to Mr..
We are proposing some new classes to the high school handbook in conjunction with Mid State dual credits. We have three teachers that we've, or have applied or been approved through the Mid State program to teach their classes here for dual credits. That being Tammy Griffin, Carla Leonard, and Tim Miller. They have just recently begun their 18-credit journey on, to be allowed to teach and have that certification and align that curriculum. They're doing their 18 credits. And then this summer, they'll work on aligning Mid State's curriculum with classes that they're teaching here. Ms. Moore and Mrs. Neve have been working on the handbook and getting that all aligned so they match. And, and next couple of weeks, they'll be meeting with the kids and making sure that they know those are offered. This is gonna be win-win situation for everybody. The students will be able to stay here, take those classes, spend less time on the road or have to have prep time to drive there, or, you know, some of them are virtual right now. They will earn credits here at school with their teachers they're familiar with. And, you know, I think the, the idea that they can ask them questions or be with them and be in person more regularly than at Mid State class. So the students will benefit here. They'll be earning credits that they can either take to, like Ms. Vishy said, to Mid State or most of them, I think all of them transferred to UW classes. And they, you know, they can look into that and get approved with Ms. Moore or to the colleges before they take it down. So, and the teachers, I'm gonna kind of, that's their education. Gets them going with new curriculum. And we were kind of laughing that when they retire, we took, talked to Mr. Miller. We said, hey, when you retire, you could go be an adjunct professor at Mid State if you wanted for a class or two. So like I said, it's a win-win. Morgan, our MSTC coordinator that meets with us this week, came in like all excited. She said, she said, no, she's got multitude numbers of schools that she works with. No other school has tripled their number of teachers and their classes that they're offering in, in this amount of time. So she was really impressed with us, happy with us. And I think that's it. So we sat down with all three of the teachers, Ms. Moore and myself, and we looked at the classes we're offering and the classes we want to bring in. Obviously, we can't do that all at once. They're all looking at about two or three classes. We talked to them, what makes sense, what fits in their curriculum? And that's what she's gonna come to the table with, the proposal, what the teachers feel comfortable with, and what we think we can fit in our schedule for fall. Correct. Yeah. So I also picked courses. We tried to pick what's that was. All of them are transferable to, they say, obviously, they, they come from the Mid State, but they're transferable to UW institutions. There's been agreement between the tech schools and the UW is that there's a certain number of courses that are transfers. So as we look at courses, we try to create courses that are transferable at 100 level or above. It depends on what college you're looking at, exactly what transfers in it. So Mr. Miller is going to be cutting out a semester for CTE teachers with current issues, one and two. It was really kind of the same course, but it's private based, so he had put it in two semesters. He's going to put that down with his current issues, once the students still have the opportunity to stay back for. And then he's going to offer next year introduction to sociology. And the following year, he'll offer introduction to university studies. That may come to in the future and change how we do that or offer both in a year. It's really gonna depend on how the students register or that need is. And also, obviously, Mr. Miller still has to teach our 10th grade classes and some things like that that have to be offered, you know, some financial, some state courses that will have to be offered. Both of those courses transfer as 100 or 200 level courses typically. It's not a perfect science until we know where our kid is actually going. And a lot of times, they have to study until part-time, partway procedure here. So we do the best we can and empower kids in a lot of general. So that way, we know they'll transfer something, we just don't know exactly what until we have that clear shared with them. So that's Mr. Miller, again, in sociology and university studies. These will be for 11 or 12th grade students and they did put 80% or better for his courses for instructor for fall. For Tammy, she will be offering introductory statistics as a semester-long course. And then she'll also offer intermediate algebra applications. Both of those do transferring at a 100 to 200 level course to UW institutions. I was thinking, I'm sure of other tech schools as well. She, so I, you know, Tammy typically teaches integrated three, that's a year-long course. What will happen next year, it looks like Mrs. Mark will end up taking that integrated three course because we don't have students that'll be taking help next year. There weren't any juniors in pre-help this year. So that course would be open anyways. This is something that's the, look forward to the schedule in the future. It'll be fluid and we'll basically just kind of have to see what needs to be offered based on how students schedule. Right now, there's a very high interest in start college now program in those courses. So we schedule, and that was 14 kids on Monday that are already looking at these courses and they're going to be offered and asking about them. So I do think that students will be taking all those courses that are offered. And then finally, Carla Leonard is offering English composition one. We may come back to, right now, we're just asking for that course for her. She kind of wanted to walk before she runs, but I have a feeling next year we'll add one more on there. This will be a semester course. What we're doing is that in part of the schedule is we are taking 3AP from a year-long course to a semester course. We talked tonight about what that feels like. We still want to prepare kids for the eighth level. And I taught those courses as well. So we have a plan, we order a college to kind of get the most important things taught in that 3AP course. The reason why we moved that to semester is one of our fears is the AP, it's not a given. They've got to pass an exam with a three or a five to get credits. So when students look at scheduling our year was that they may look at, you know, English top one and say, I passed it, I had college credit, I got passed that course. It's not all due to the one exam. It's a lot of parts you can get. So our fear was they're gonna go for what's given and maybe not sign up for that 3AP and AP. So we're gonna kind of keep those programs going. We thought, well, as a junior looking at this, they might say, okay, I'm gonna do English top one and get that credit, but I'm also gonna appear for 3AP so I can take that exam as well after taking AP and try to get the most credits that I can. This is something that I'll continue to play out depending on how our students schedule, how our students register, that's what we're gonna find to what we offer. So right now, we're just seeing kind of how it plays out, recognizing that it will be a little bit basic change in the future. Can I tell you?
Good, thank you. Questions?
So just, how many kids? So you said with the one, you have like portable kit. So is there a memo of how many kids have to sign up for those credits or for those extracurriculars?
For the ones that will be offered.
The college.
Will the classes still be offered? They might have, if I'm correct, they might have 20 kids in there. Not all those kids have to take the class for dual credit through Mid State. That said, if they only had two kids. Honestly, I don't know. We have more than two kids in all of these courses. Except for maybe one of the mans, but those, those aren't really out there for the kids, I guess, yet. We were working on this a lot this week. But if we only had two kids for English top one, we're probably not running that course if the kids are gonna register elsewhere. It's not physically responsible. You know.
But that being said, and I want to add this, because we offer it, they can't, the student can't then decide, well, I'm just gonna go to Mid State to take it. Now, we offer it, so if they want to take it, they have to take it in-house if we offer.
Because we're saving us some money too when we need them here and we can offer that. Remember last board meeting, I said like, one of our kids has pipe fitting. They'll still be able to go there. That's something we're not gonna bring here, wouldn't be displayed, you know, responsibly, you know. So yeah, I was a little bit that can go for pipe fitting. But Morgan did say, I have a, I know, it was a bless, 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 right? We are offering out of the 12 or 14 classes that we're, offered last, or last semester if the kids went for, over half, seven or eight, but would be here now. And I think you have to offer.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. And yeah, we have, we would be coming out numbers down for the kids that are going through Mid State. So, okay, I don't foresee numbers being an issue. But yeah, if, if we have one or two kids sign up, that's something where we come back to the table and say, well, our kids have registered here, this is the course we have to offer. Right now, my opinion, I don't foresee that being an issue. The courses Tim, Tim is offering, you know, they're taking like crazy. They weren't allowed to take English top one because it's too closely aligned kind of in their college, college practice. We're kind of redoing, you know, kind of looking at those courses and making sure that it won't be too much right now. But ultimately, I think we'll have the numbers.
The stats has been a popular course.
Stats this year has really taken off. You know, the one that kids haven't taken so much yet is that intermediate algebra applications. But because it's being offered, I think that there's gonna be a high interest in it because they have more interest here. And so the stats is this year, all of a sudden, kids are taking that. We had some students who college matched in the past, but that wasn't transferred at 100 level to UW. So that's probably, we kind of didn't offer that. The kids that took college match were going to Mid State for programs. That one's still we offer for one.
Good.
And once the, the teachers start, Carla, they've already been on, Tammy was the other name, I remember they had that class. They, once they get certified, they can teach all of the classes that they're going to offer. So, you know, like we said, we're only offering a couple for fall. So, you know, like we said, we're only offering a couple of those for fall, but they'll be good to go. And even when they're in a middle class, they don't finish it by fall, but they'll be, as long as they're starting.
Any other question? Okay. I guess we need a motion for this approval.
I make a motion to consider approval of amendment twenty-one, twenty-two course description book.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item. Consider approval of twenty-one, twenty-two Wisconsin School Deficient Purchasing Cooperative.
This is a sixty-six of three agreement with a whole bunch of other schools across the state of Wisconsin, where we have formed a part of a purchasing cooperative for the past several years. Prior to that, we were with a purchasing cooperative through one of the CISA's, not our own CISA. But this is kind of an offshoot of that. And this allows us to purchase items in food service in bulk with other districts in order to cut our costs. And they negotiate our contract prices and other things on behalf of the cooperative. Like our milk is through the cooperative. So like that gets negotiated out with us through that. So I'm going to ask you for approval of continuing to be a member of this purchasing cooperative.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote? Motion is carried. Item thirteen, set annual reimbursement rates for thirty meals and mileage.
So each year, we have to, according to our policy, and this in part goes with the changes in the federal reimbursement rates in terms of mileage. Each year, the board has to set the reimbursement rates. The payable IRS rate this year is fifty-six cents per mile. And we are asking for no changes to the meal rates. Thirty-six dollars is a day of travel or forty-six dollars total is a full day at a conference. We're just going to leave those. This year, that wouldn't be one of our savings areas is conferences and meetings and things. So we're just going to ask you to keep those, those at those rates.
Okay? Any further questions? If not, a motion, please.
So, second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Motion is carried. Authorize district administrator to change the remaining in-service days of the 2021 school calendar to coincide with potential mass vaccination dates for school staff.
Okay, so in trying to secure some level of vaccination for our staff when our staff becomes eligible. And in Wisconsin, school personnel are not eligible to receive the COVID vaccine until March first, unless they qualify in some other means, whether you're sixty-five or you're considered like a quasi-health worker within the school realm. There's a few areas, like our school nurses were already in. But general school personnel are not eligible until after March first. So in trying to secure vaccination dates for our staff, after discussions with Marshfield Clinic and Security Health, who is our health insurance provider, and then with Wood County Health, we're, in order to do a mass vaccination clinic for our staff, the soonest possible date, that it's tentative, that we're looking at is March nineteenth from Marshfield Security Health. And they are proposing that we do that clinic in conjunction with a clinic that they're tentatively planning with the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. March nineteenth is certainly a school day for us. The way this clinic would work, we would have to have our staff reporting into one of the buildings in Wisconsin Rapids. And then we don't have the logistics of all that determined. And they'd probably be reporting though three at a time, receive their vaccine. Then they'd have to send fifteen minutes, but well, there, we've got to have another group on the queue and another group traveling. We have about, we have anywhere from forty-five to about sixty members of our staff who are designing the vaccine. We have seventy-five staff members. We have a handful, again, that have already been vaccinated. So there is a handful that is what probably at the moment wouldn't. So really, it becomes a logistical challenge to show the staff and get them back here and maintaining continuity with our classrooms, with our food service, with our maintenance. Because we're going to have staff in all of those areas seeking the vaccine. And again, those dates are tentative. Right now, if I were a betting person on that, I'd say we may not have it on March nineteenth. Wood County Health, it's probably going to be a little longer beyond March nineteenth. It'd be quite a bit longer before they would be able to accommodate us. And again, these are only if those vaccines are available. The second vaccine date is a little interesting too. Depending on the vaccine we would receive, it's either a twenty-one day change or a twenty-eight day change to the second vaccine. If we're looking at March nineteenth for vaccine one, depending on the vendor of the vaccine, we'd either be looking at April ninth or April sixteenth for vaccine two. So what I'm asking is your, your approval for me to have some flexibility once I start to be able to pin these dates now. We have three in-service dates left, March fifth, April fifth, and May third. So I'd ask you for flexibility to allow me to change those dates to coincide as best we can with those vaccination clinics to allow the logistics of this to take place. It would be a little bit different beast if we did this actually in our building. If March nineteenth doesn't work out, it's a possibility we're doing it in our building. That might be a different beast, but it's still going to be a logistical challenge. So, you know, it is possible that we don't have March nineteenth. I would, Morgan with Marshfield Clinic Security Health, they need at least a two-week, like, two-week deadline course ahead of it. So, you know, they'd be looking to know, I would hope by early March, we'd know. I am probably not moving the March fifth date at this moment. I don't think that one I would move. Depending on when Marshfield Clinic can tell us for sure what, what the deal is if March nineteenth is going to work. If they could tell me next week that March nineteenth is going to work, I'd be tempted just to move that March fifteenth date. I don't think I'm getting an answer from them by next week. And they're ready to do services things, so we need to continue to plan for new. This won't be a day off per se for the staff. They would still need to report to work. Report if they're going to get the vaccine, do that, come back to work. Obviously, there will be, working with Marshfield Clinic, they are taking the precautions and things to monitor staff afterwards and to make sure people aren't having adverse reactions. Anecdotally, one I've been told from the folks who've been setting these things up is that vaccine number one doesn't tend to have the effect that vaccine number two does in terms of maybe some side effects. But from what they're telling us, it's more prevalent for the side effects to kick in after vaccine two. And they put it's typically a delayed response. It's not within the first couple of hours, it's typically a day later. So, so I would just ask you for flexibility. And I would certainly keep you informed if we're going to start to move dates around. We would certainly be getting that out to our parents, to our staff, and all the people we need to, to our health companies to do that.
Okay? Any other questions? If not, any motion for this?
Yeah.
I make a motion to authorize the district administrator to change her in-service days on 2020-21 calendar year to see with potential mass vaccination dates for the school staff.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Change.
Do you allow the adjustments in the in-service days? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Any virtual comment? Kathy?
I'm just blown away with all the great things that's going on, both at elementary and high school. I'm just really, really pleased with what we're doing here in Florida. And I just want to remind everyone to vote on February sixteenth. It's important. It's the state school superintendent race. So that's the only thing on the ballot for Karen. Get out and vote.
Good.
Yeah, definitely. Back up what Kathy said, it's great to see the programs that we have with the CTE and the nice things that the Boys and Girls at Club did for the for that food drive or can drive. And then we just get one more, well, we get actually a couple of home games, but get kind of limited on our people I could attend. But we've essentially made it through basketball season and both on the boys and the girls' side. So watch on, on Facebook Live. So, and stay warm on it. It's cold.
Beth?
Just want to, whatever, same thing Kathy and Carrie said, a lot of good things going on. Just want to recognize our support staff. I was talking to some people and, you know, with this COVID, everything going on, I know our teachers and ministry everybody's done a heck of a job. You know, our sports, sports staff has really stepped up and had a few parents recognize things they've done for their children during this, this time. So I just kind of want to make a special note to the sports staff. They do a lot every day, but during the COVID, they've been above, above every day to help some kids out in needs and other things. So just thank them and hope everybody has a, like, spring comes and we can keep on rolling.
The election is obviously critical. Make sure you vote however you want to do it, whenever you want to do it, or whoever you want to do it for, but make sure you do it. Spring primaries are notoriously poorly intended and participated in, which means that a relatively minute handful of citizens get to pick who the rest of us get to choose in April. So please encourage everybody to exercise their options to vote pro or con. We're looking at a year into the pandemic. In February of last year, this suddenly became evident. And parents and staff and kids have all slotted through in a remarkable fashion. I don't know how many of you saw the report that Dr. Olson and Dr. Fox published. Frederica Frymard had it on her Here and Now episode on Wisconsin Public Television last Friday. It's gotten nation, national, and international exposure with the, the school districts in southeastern Wexford County. The job that you and our neighboring districts have done based upon Dr. Fox's study is truly, truly remarkable. I was, a year ago, I was, I was sure that in spite of everybody's best efforts, the schools would be a, a super-spreader again. And that hasn't happened thanks to the parents and staff and the kids. And you're all to be super dependent for that in, in every possible way. If there's a bright spot in this whole dumpster fire of year, it has to be the way in which the schools have stepped up and tried their very, very best to give the kids everything they possibly can under circumstances that none of us were trained for and none of us were ever expecting. So congratulations to everybody for doing as good a job as anybody can ever expect you to do. Thank you. We have established a meeting for March tenth. Do we want to do a meeting for April? April fourteenth?
October.
Okay? Okay, we're done April fourteenth. I'm assuming, as we said, we're back at the elementary school for April.
Yeah, yeah. The only reason we were removed is we're doing ducts cleaning. We have another building this, this evening.
That's right. Unless anybody has anything else to say, I'll call for a adjournment.
The most.
Okay, second. Yep. All in favor? Supporting, supporting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Carrie.